Okay, it's seven thirty, everyone. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, May fourth, two thousand twenty-one, regular city council meeting of the city of West Liberty. All counselors are present. Counselor Smith is on Zoom. And also present tonight is interim city manager Elizabeth Hanson and city clerk Weeger. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
So, motion to approve. And the second, is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Anybody oppose? David, yes? Passes five zero. I'm gonna forget to look up or listen for him, so. So tonight, the first agenda item is public hearings. And this is a public hearing on our ordinance establishing the regulations of operating golf carts, ATVs and UTVs in the city of West Liberty. Clear motion?
Motion to open.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Smith? Yes, no, to open the public hearing? A thumbs up for yes? Okay, councilmember Smith. Yes, councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock? Councilmember Zacharias and councilmember McPhair?
Yes.
Okay, has been approved to open the meeting, five zero. Okay, we do have a couple of members in the audience for the public hearing. If you could just state your name and your address and for the record. And then any comments you'd like to let the council know or any questions or anything that you may ask council.
Jim Thurston, two hundred, Craig Lane, West Liberty, Iowa. No, I didn't know.
Doug?
Doug Phillip, one oh four South Alhoun Street, West Liberty. I read that.
Okay, you both, just for the record, both of you guys were here for the work session was in support of that. Okay, thank you guys for coming tonight? Okay, anybody on Zoom that would like to speak for or against the ordinance? Okay. And my question is, since we can't hear Dave, are we having a volume or audio issue?
Pretty quiet, I had to turn my volume off, but my recommendation is just to speak up.
Speak louder?
Yeah.
Okay.
What about?
They should hear you.
Okay, we don't have to turn anything on.
Okay, it's already on, just with the eyes on.
Yes, looking at me.
Always watching.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I put the message up there and I'm currently not seeing anyone raise their hand. I don't know if you want to just give it another minute since it's seven thirty-four.
So, I heard that we, our audio was a little bit light and soft. So I'm gonna speak up. If there's anyone that's out there on Zoom that is in support or against the golf cart ATV or UTV, if you'd like to raise your hand or comment in support or against the ordinance, this would be the time. Okay. Yes. Before the meeting, I did inform the council there, there is a couple of emails reference this public hearing that was on their desk. I believe they have read through the two emails. So we will go ahead and proceed. Is? Yes.
Questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I did notice that you make a good point in their emails about lights and there isn't anything written in there. Is it necessary for the vehicles to have the lights? Because it isn't written in as far as they should have, shall be allowed to operate.
But you can't run after dark, can you?
Right. So sunrise to sunset.
Sunrise to sunset, so they wouldn't need them. I mean, because we're telling them that by sundown, they have to be off the road.
Okay. I didn't know if that was, well, in the event, sometimes traffic, they require vehicles. State cars have lights on when it's raining. And I know the inclement weather was one of the questions. But if it's raining in route while they're in route, I mean, that isn't considered inclement weather. But is that something that we need to have, make sure they have lights on, or it doesn't matter?
I think most of them will be equipped with lights anyways.
Okay.
In the inclement weather, you know, a lot of these are used for snowballs. At least the ATVs use those. And I don't know which you might, whether you know what the definition of those is.
And? Any?
And then, under the permit, not obtained or renewed by July one, is there going to be a penalty then, if they don't get their permit by July one? A penalty may be assessed in the amount per resolution of the city council? Or is that just in there in the event we do sign of penalty? Because under eight dash twelve dash four, permit required, number one, the last sentence, if the permit is not obtained or renewed by July one, a penalty may be assessed. I mean, does that?
And you're gonna do that by resolution?
Yeah, so that's just in there for the future.
Correct.
So it's not written, it's not?
Yeah, and when this, three readings, once it's been approved by the third reading, then we'll make sure it gets in the schedule and you can assess a fee for enforcement at that time, a penalty.
But if it lapses as of July one and they don't renew it, wouldn't they just have to repay the new fee? And there wouldn't, I mean, why is there a penalty? I'm just concerned.
The penalty would be like operating a vehicle without registration, without license plates. The state law says you have to have a car registered to operate on state and city streets. So it'd be just like that, it would be like a city citation that you're actually operating it without a permit.
Okay, okay, I just needed clarification on that.
Great.
And then the PD is going to be doing the inspection?
I would assume so. They do all the other vehicle inspections.
All right.
Okay, can we go back to the inclement weather part? Do we need to clarify that? Because like Robbie said, sometimes in the winter, they use it for snowballing. Which?
Would be?
Would be.
Incomet weather.
Right?
Is that?
I mean, I saw some this last year, I saw a few this last year that were used for falling driveways and stuff.
Right.
Me?
I'm guessing that's more.
But do?
But it says ATVs may not be operated on city streets during times of inclement weather. So
just for.
Do we need to put a subscription under that with the exception of snow removal?
When being used or operated in? Yeah. I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, but you did have something to say. Did you not want to say? Okay, did it get answered or?
No. I have a question about the lights. Are we talking headlights or lights?
The headlights is. Okay, any further questions? Okay, so is there a motion to close the hearing then?
Motion second.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Smith, close the hearing? Show.
Okay.
Councilmember McPhair?
Yes.
Okay, it passes five zero, we are closed. We do have the ordinance in front of us. It is two thousand twenty-one, zero four, two zero, dash, zero, one. It would be the first reading. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve with the amendment of the snow removal under eight, twelve, dash, three, two, M.
The exception is still removal?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we will go ahead and do a roll call for the first reading. Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember McPhair?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Okay, passes five zero. Okay, we are on to the consent agenda. Tonight, we have three items, regular city council meeting of April twentieth, the special council meeting minutes of April twenty-fifth, and the city clerk treasures report for February twenty twenty-one.
Second. Motion to approve consent agenda.
But I have an amendment to it.
Okay.
And the number one on that, this is on April twentieth meeting minutes. Council members in attendance. Doesn't show me there, but I made a lot of motions.
There is a motion to approve those with the addition of Diane being present. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any further discussion? On? You, you may leave. If you were here just for the golf cart.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Two more.
Okay. Where?
We have a motion in the second.
I got interrupted. I don't think they want to stay for the whole meeting. Okay, first and the second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Dave? Okay, Dave approves, passes five zero. We have vendor voucher claims list in front of us tonight. There's two of those. The first one is in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents. So, motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody oppose? Passes five zero. We have a second vendor vouchers claims list in the amount of ninety-five dollars. Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Abstain.
Okay, anybody oppose? Passes four zero with one abstention. And we are on to public comments and correspondence. Well, we actually do have the farmer's market actually down here.
It's under new business B.
Yeah.
Do you want to move that up?
Yeah, let's go ahead and move it up. Can we do that?
I'll make a motion, we move it up to public comments.
Second. Typically, you wouldn't move it because you have it under your business as you're, in order to make a motion.
Oh, so under public comments, we don't do that.
Okay, I was, I was, I was, I was trying to, trying to get you out of here five or 10 minutes earlier. But that's fine.
But if you would like to have them go ahead and talk about it?
Yeah.
Then you can go ahead and have them talk about that, but then you would make your motion.
In the business.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and do that.
All right, I'm Jessica Madison, this is my husband, Jim. We're from Nichols, but we have been market, farmer's market vendors here in West Liberty for ooh, four-ish years. We have been appointed market managers for this season. And we just wanted to introduce ourselves and just let you know that we're excited to continue the farmer's market. We are working to try to make it as good as it has been in the past. And keeping all of the protocols still in mind and with the CDC and the state guidelines. We will do whatever is necessary to run a successful market.
Oh, thanks.
Sounds great. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay. There's no answer. Public comments, we posted a post that if anybody had any public comments, if you'd like to raise your hand, and then we'll address comments. Do you see anybody's hands raised? Okay. Let's go ahead and go on to counselors. Councilmember Veronica, any public comments?
Yes, I had a complaint about noise. Loud radio from a house and cars already starting this spring. Which I referred to interim chief Lyra. And, and the police were called, one of the nights, of many nights that it was happening. Anyway, so I've done a little bit of research, looking up, our noise control ordinance talks about decibel levels rather than just the noise, which is really hard because if there is an app, I have learned though, on your phone, if you want to actually check it, there is an app you can put on your phone. I've learned that. I don't use it, but I've learned. Um, so, and I've looked at several communities around us and none of them use the decibel system like we've had in place for quite a few years. Anyway, so I would like to refer to the public safety committee. I did print off Iowa cities because they go into more specific information than what most of the communities do around us. That it's, it's, if it infringes on a property next to you or if, if it's longer than thirty seconds, there's some specifics in Iowa City that, that I like better than our decibel one. Anyway, I printed them off and I'd like to refer them to the public safety committee to talk about. Thank you very much.
It needs to be updated anyway. It's, it's been long overdue because I don't think anybody uses the decibel.
I didn't find anybody in our area that uses decibels.
It's so antiquated, yeah.
I saw this afternoon with a local police department and we complained about the same issue. There's a bunch of new residents that the first thing they do with the newer cars with the mufflers with the actions is big. And for the last two or three weeks, I've been assisted to the soccer games locally. And they raced on Elm Street and make such noise though. And I know that obviously the department is showing human power and resources. I would love to see.
Yeah, so I think ours really needs to be looking at. That's the only thing I had was the noise complaint.
And I'm on Third Street, which is the highway.
Yes.
And there is a lot of vehicle noise. A lot of vehicle noise unnecessarily. They're racing.
And the radios.
Yeah.
Your windows rattling?
Yes, they did, a couple of times, a couple of the cars that went by. But that part of the bumper of the old house.
Councilmember Rock? Councilmember Zacharias? Okay, councilmember McPhair, public comments?
Nothing.
Okay, councilmember Smith, you moved on me.
He's trying to.
I don't think he has.
Sit third down.
Yeah, okay, doesn't look like he has anything for the council. Did the city receive anything?
I did receive an email from, communication from Linda Brady. She lives in the housing, one of the housing additions outside of West Liberty. And she just had some questions with regards to rural fire ambulance service versus city limited service. And I provided her the information consistent with what we communicated. And she said, thank you very much.
Anything else, Elizabeth? Okay, let's go ahead and go on to old business. I would like to thank, we did, in the approval of the consent agenda, we did have a special council meeting on April twenty-fifth. I'd like to thank the council for coming to that special meeting and approving an extension till the end of September to work on the twenty-eight E extension. That extension to that specific date was requested by the rural board and the council did approve that. I just wanted to stick that since there really wasn't anywhere on the agenda, but that was old business. So I just thought I'd start there. We do have the ordinance two thousand twenty-one zero four, two zero, dash, zero, one, and this is a second reading. And this is for the ordinance approving the application to change the agricultural zone to mixed R one, R two, and R three for the mixed residential development on the northeast corner of East Rainbow Drive and Garfield Avenue. And that's out where, by subway, just right across Rainbow. Is that new addition going out?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion or any questions? Hearing none. Councilmember McPhair?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Okay, passes five zero. We have a second resolution and this is dash two, one. Well, it's actually two thousand twenty-one, zero five, zero four, dash, two, one. And that's approving the amendment to the seminary regulations, including the niches.
Motion second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember McPhair?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Passes five zero. We are on to new business. We do have a resolution in front of us. This is dash twenty-two. It's a resolution setting a date for public hearing on the proposal to enter into a water revenue refunding loan agreement in borrow money thereunder in the principal amount not to exceed two million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And we do have Chip Schultz with our bond here. Chip, do you have any, anything you'd like to speak references to the council?
It's, so it's really the resolution in front of you allows the council to take action to set a date for a public hearing, the hearing date being on May eighteenth. It's really a unique environment that the city has to take advantage of the low interest rates that are available. We propose a private placement refunding transaction, which will find a direct lender, including will, will show the lending proposal to banks in West Liberty. And we look for some very good savings for water utility rate payers. And in the range of probably two hundred and fifty-five to two hundred and seventy-five thousand, broadly speaking. But we'll have more information here coming up for your May eighteenth meeting. So glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chip. And I know that previous councils have done this in the past where we've been able to refinance and, and actually allow the residents to be able to save money into these transactions. So it's something that you're with?
Mr. Mayor, we also did have the finance committee meet and they went through all of the documentation that you have enclosed in your council packet. Therefore, councilmember McPhair and or councilmember Zacharias, if you'd like to add anything from the finance committee or your recommendation to council.
I would just say that is the common practice of refinancing your debt and the bill, right? You know, savings of the community, so, yeah.
Yeah. The rate was too good to pass up, so thanks for keeping us informed, Chip, so that we can take advantage of these new rates and consult, pay off quickly.
Thank you.
Okay. So is there a?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for May eighteenth.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second to set that hearing for May eighteen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember McPhair?
Yes.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharias? Councilmember Smith? Okay, passes five zero. We are on to event request. West Liberty Chamber Commerce, the farmer's market, citywide garage, or gar, garage sales, fair parade, the picnic in the park, and holiday open house. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Pretty much, it sounds like it's continuing of what we always have had.
Looks like it's a benefit solve, but it's not.
Do you think that you will need all of that Spencer Street block or just to the alleyway?
Just in the alley is what it submitted for.
Okay, that's what I noticed. I didn't know if there was more vendors.
I will tell you, the initial survey I sent out, there's quite a few new people interested in being vendors. Maybe not every week, but I think occasional vendors are welcome also, so.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
But it's probably best to close the whole street.
Yeah.
Because you don't want traffic coming in off of four, turning onto there.
In the past, people have parked there to walk into the market because there's not really, the main third, third street is very busy. So a lot of people park on the back side and walk in. But we also, if made it, if needed, can line vendors along the blocked part of the street where the cones usually are.
Yeah, let's keep it.
I don't want to take the whole street because people live in, maybe that's their access to their homes.
It allows traffic thoroughfare to on those alleys, if they need.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I did have a conversation with director, chamber director and for Stephanie. And she will be providing all of the insurance coverage under the chamber for all the events listed. And, and again, she also had stated that they would continue to follow the guidelines by CDC, the state, and to make sure that everyone is practicing during these events, what's required of them.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
He's over here. He just keeps moving around, I'm listening.
You're good. I don't hear any objection from him. Passes five zero. We do have a resolution. dash 23 in front of us, approving the amendment to the fee schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve with an amendment to the columbarium niches. I thought we had talked about 850, not 1,000.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it's written in several locations. The motion is to amend, send a current resolution in front of you from 1,050, just to make sure I have that clear.
Yes.
And you seconded that?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
And councilmember Smith? Passes 5-0. Okay, next on the agenda is setting a work session. Looks like the date would be May 18th for Chapter 1 Code of Ordinance. This relates to the Fire Department, to fiscal year 21 budget amendment, the review of the website design proposals, and to discuss the state and local funding of the American Rescue Plan.
How much time are we talking? I mean, that's a lot of stuff.
Well, I can tell you, right now at this time, I did sit in on a webinar for the rescue plan, and I know during that, they had stated that May 10, they were looking to release guidelines. I have not, you know, seen anything coming out before then, so if they do not come out by May 10, I would probably not be best prepared to have that as a part of the work session. So just, yeah, just to. I don't know, councilmember Rock, have you heard anything from your, okay.
Yeah.
As we went through the webinar, there were several questions, and they had just simply stated that it's, they need, that we need to wait until those guidelines, and that they did foresee that there would still be more questions involved.
So what are they anticipating for a release date of the funds?
They could not even provide that answer.
So is that something we could easily move back to our June?
Yeah.
And still. I mean, if, we don't know when they're going to put the guidelines out, we don't know when the money's going to come, obviously, we've got more time than.
Yes.
Yes.
Than having to discuss it now when we don't know.
And for some reason, if we don't get to the website design, we could maybe push that back.
To June.
To June also.
Okay, we can do that.
I would make a motion to approve the work session, with the exception of the funding for the American Rescue Plan. We'll push that back.
And the website, did you say?
If we run out of time.
If we run out of time, at that time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six, 6:30 on the 18th.
Yep. We just need to make sure we get the budget amendment done.
Yeah. Yeah, do those first couple things, I think are the priorities right now, if we still have time.
Do you need a second on that?
Yes.
Second.
There's motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes 5-0. We're on to resolution dash 24, and this is the discussion and appropriate follow-up for the resolution for approval of the professional services of Northway, an amount of $18,075 to clean well number two.
Motion.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? We have Leo here, Leo, is there anything you want us to know further on this?
No, I think, I think I, I explained it all pretty well, I think Northway is the people to do this, they, they've been working on the well all along, kind of maintaining it. So this is the last expenditure that I see for you, until we come back with a report saying, here's how much it is to completely rehab the well, if the DNR agrees with everything. So this will be the last one until we, until we go further as far as knowing that we have a production well.
Okay, so there happens to be like a surprise change order, that's on you then.
Well, sir, I don't think we can go that far.
But, okay, thank. Go ahead, Leo. Thank you, Leo.
All right.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
And councilmember Smith? Passes 5-0, I am hoping that everything goes well with that, if we can have that as a functioning well. That would be very well for the city. Okay, we now are on to resolution dash 25, and this is approved, setting a date for a public hearing on June 1st to establish a storm water utility ordinance. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember McFerrin?
Um, we're having it on May 18th or June 1st?
June 1st.
Okay, because it's written as May 18th.
Oh.
In the agenda.
And it says it in the resolution, too.
We, so I provided an update due to the time to have this posted to, as a public hearing, and we needed to move it to June 1st to provide adequate time for public hearing posting.
Okay, ordinance, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Passes 5-0. We are on to reports. Leo, you'd be up first tonight.
Hey, just a quick report on City Hall, looks like they, they found some electrical problems at the, at the police department, part of the building, they met with the electrical engineer today, and I think Kara, the architect, is meeting with Lee tomorrow to kind of go over options and ideas, but I, I don't think they're far enough to present to you yet, other than they, they found some things they weren't happy with in the electrical area on the PD. Other than that, I haven't heard of any other problems, and I think tomorrow, there'll be a meeting with Lee to kind of, kind of go through some of those issues. Next, the next one I wanted to say is a library. The, again, our architect sent a proposal over, basically for kind of a rehab of the kitchen and the gaming room and a few other things, I don't know if Ally's on now, but I think that was sent to her maybe a week or so ago. Just letting you know that that's out there. And then finally, Epoch Gary edition called Alta Ventures Phase 3, we have reviewed the stormwater evaluation that was provided to us by, by MSA, MSA engineers. We gave them comments today, we think they need to make a few changes to it, but I just sent those comments back to them today. So I have a feeling next council meeting, we'll be talking about. Once they get past the stormwater, they'll be able to move forward pretty quickly. And that's all I had today.
Leo, I do have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00 AM to go over the information with the City Hall and the Police Department electric issues. And also, Leo, I just want to let you know, I'm going to be reaching out to, to set a meeting for review of the Platts and Mysee property, and go over that, so I'll be following up with you later this week on setting a meeting for that.
Sounds perfect, thank you.
Any questions for Leo? Doesn't look like, thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead. Interim City Manager Hanson, is there any highlights that you want to?
I do have a highlight, we had a utility committee meeting today with HMG to review the electric rates, and both Kara and Diane were, were in attendance. We do have a follow-up meeting scheduled for May 27th on that. Real quick update on the City Manager and Police Chief searches, we are down to seven semifinalists for the police chief, we're meeting with the Public Safety Committee next Wednesday to narrow that down even further, and then there's six semifinalists for, for the City Manager position, and that, those will all come back to the full council on the agenda, that'll be a closed session to review those candidates, and that is what I have today.
Okay. Lee, any highlights from your report?
And, no, I just, you've already kind of heard, I set a meeting tomorrow to go over the, the City Hall, and had a meeting to set with R, and we're, and just quick in my report back on audit with our CPA, outside of that, unless anyone has any questions, there's nothing more to add.
Is Brittany Woodson moving over to administrative then, or?
So currently, right now, she's split between the library and.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we're utilizing, we have an employee that's out for the month of May.
Okay.
On medical leave, and then, so between Ally and I, we're utilizing her, a member of the community here, I know, I think she's been with the library over a year, is that correct, Ally?
Yes.
So she knows a lot of things from.
Yeah, Brittany's been with the library for two years now.
Okay.
Yep.
And so she's hit the ground running, and, and she's still right in, she, she has experience of working in the hospital field, so she has some strong customer service skills that she brings with her, so.
Okay, any questions for Lee? We will go, Superintendent Travers, do you have anything that you want to add, any highlights from your report?
No, it's all there. If you have any questions for me, feel free.
Any questions for Ed? Hearing none, thank you, Ed.
Mr. Mayor, Adam is on here, I didn't have his report, but I didn't know, sorry, Adam. He had, they've had a lot of things, he had, give a quick update to us during our staff meeting, so I didn't know, Adam, did you want to add anything that you didn't have in our notes from staff meeting?
Um. We've, I updated the SDS book at the shop, took some stuff out, added some stuff. Starting the sidewalks, the city sidewalk repairs in the squadron, we just started tearing those out this week, hopefully get them poured this week. And tore out a tree for Nick at Friendship Park, tore out a stump for him. Other than that, we're grinding stumps, and grinding stumps, and grinding more stumps.
Oh.
Fifty, so it's almost done.
Adam, I did have a question for you.
Yeah.
A resident here in town, Mr. McFerrin would like to know when his stump is going to be ground out.
Uh, whenever the guys get to it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we'll probably do all of them on the highway, try to do those at the same time, so. I don't know.
Any further questions for Adam? Thank you, Adam. And we will go ahead and just file the police report. And we are down to the final part of the meeting, is there a motion for adjournment?
No, wait.
Did I miss something?
Committees.
Oh, committees, yeah. Okay, Diane?
I, no, I just had one thing.
Okay.
We, the utility committee did me, Elizabeth commented on it, but we have ordered the second set of columbariums, and they will be here, Adam, I hope you're listening, mid September to the first part of October, is when the next set should arrive.
Okay.
And no shipping issues this time?
Not that we have yet heard of. And this way, they won't have to set over the winter, like they did this last year.
Is it, is it, are they two?
Identical, just like the two that we just placed.
Right.
Two more, just identical to those.
And that makes.
And that will make the four that will complete the circle. Cool. Okay, that's all I had, sorry.
Okay.
Now I'm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? You're close, thank you, guys.